Great. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roles so that we might establish a quorum?
Thank you, Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris.
President.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Chenier. Online earlier, we'll check on that. And Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinberg.
I am here, thank you. We do have a quorum. I'd ask everyone who can to please stand, and I would ask Councilmember Carr to please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. American. Happily. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in his own liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Carr, and welcome to my colleagues, welcome to the city staff, most important welcome to the public. This is one of, I think, the most happy and maybe important rituals and traditions of our city council. And that is at the, in the middle and or the, towards the end of the summertime, to listen to the presentations from our young people who have participated in summer at City Hall. I want to thank Councilmember Chenier, as always, for being the linchpin of this initiative, as with so many other initiatives, and to help continue to push this very, very important program and tradition. And the city team that works so hard with these young people. I know that every time I've been privileged to hear these recommendations, that I've been inspired, I've learned a lot, and there have been real ideas that have come forward that that I think have motivated me to think even harder and deeper about what we can be doing together to address some of the challenges in our city. And so today, we get that opportunity again with a new cohort of students, and I'm really looking forward to, I believe, the six presentations, the council questions and comments, and suggested next steps. Jay, do you want to say, make a couple of opening remarks?
So Councilmember Chenier is participating from an iPhone, so he may not be able to make remarks, but he is online.
Okay. Well, we will await Councilmember Chenier's opening comments. Who is leading us through the presentations today, Mr. City Manager?
That will be, Chris Wimberly will be introducing each of the presentations today.
Okay, Chris Wimberly, welcome, and I know how hard you work with these young people, and what a great job you do, you and your team do. And I want to welcome you and turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg, City Councilmembers, City Clerk Cuppy, and City Manager Chan. When I stood before you last summer at the conclusion of the Summer at City Hall program, I realized that our team had to do something bigger and better for the 2020 Summer at City Hall program. We would be celebrating a milestone as the 10th session of the Summer at City Hall program would be taking place in 2020, and making it memorable was critical. Boy, did we make it memorable. COVID pandemic, public health advisories, distant learning, virtual meetings, Virtual Spirit Week, a drive-through graduation, and much more, just to name a few. Hosting this year's program virtually is something none of us will forget. Back in March, we were unsure if we would even have a program due to the stay-at-home order. We pondered, do we host it virtually, and how could we do it? Would the students want to participate on another virtual platform after distance learning for the last part of the school year? How do we make it engaging for the students? Will it really be Summer at City Hall? Each of these questions were real and the answers unknown. I am happy to announce that with the unyielding commitment of the Summer at City Hall team, mission accomplished. I would like to take a moment to thank those team members, our liaisons from Natomas Unified, SacCity Unified, and Twin Rivers Unified School Districts, our teachers, Ms. Bump, Ms. Evans, and Mr. Washington, the Transformers, our senior liaisons, Jennifer Ariza and Mauro Solis Rodriguez, and Program Coordinator Maria Vidas Madal. Without these coordinated efforts of this team, the Summer at Virtual City Hall Limited Edition would not have been the success it is today. Thank you all. I would like to introduce Maria Vidas Madal.
Good afternoon, City Council. Thank you for giving the Summer at Virtual City Hall Limited Edition the opportunity to be here. My name is Maria Vidas Madal, and I am the Program Coordinator for the program. Five years ago, I joined the team, and I am amazed that even though that we did this year program virtually, the young people committed to being a part of it. Today, we would like to acknowledge this amazing group of students, to their hard work during this summer, and their commitment to make a change in their communities despite the challenging times we're having. They have created six wonderful presentations for you to express their concerns and issues going on in our city. Shortly, they will have the opportunity to demonstrate their talent and creativity as they reflect it in their public service announcement and billboard they have put together to share with all of you. I also would like to recognize the outstanding performance of the returning youth, the Transformers. They have provided an amazing support and guidance to students during these last five weeks. It is always great to see young people stepping out of their comfort zone and see their desire to give back and share their experiences and support to our program. This year, Summer at Virtual City Hall Limited Edition program graduated 55 students from various schools, backgrounds, and communities throughout Sacramento. There were 41 students that attended every day of instructional class this year, receiving perfect attendance certificates. Creativity and thinking out of the box has been key. The drive-through graduation last night allowed students to pull up to receive their polos, certificates, and swag bags in style. Horns were honking and cheering was loud, but of course, we were wearing our face masks and practicing our social distancing. I have to say that the team were very excited to see the students and their family for the first time outside of the Zoom meetings to supporting their accomplishment of graduation. We even had the Transformers streaming live on Zoom to join the event. Once again, thank you so much for your support to our program, and now I would like to introduce Mauro Solis Rodriguez.
Thank you, Maria. So my name is Mauro Solis Rodriguez. I am one of the two senior liaisons for the Summer at Virtual City Hall Limited Edition. Unfortunately, my counterpart, Jennifer Ariza, could not be here in attendance, but we, but I will speak on her behalf. So we both have masters in social work from Sacramento State. Our masters are primarily focused on working with youth and families. And that, that master's degrees has allowed us to do our job and function within Summer at City Hall. As liaisons, we were both tasked with providing one-on-one support to each student within the program on a weekly or case-by-case situation. We provided counseling, advice, workforce readiness, and mental wellness support. This one-on-one support given to each student is what makes, sorry, this one-on-one support given to each student is something that has, has made not only the liaison position unique, but also Summer at City Hall. Not only were we providing weekly support to students, we were also hosting workshops on a daily basis on a plethora of topics such as youth development, social justice, debates, critical thinking, career exploration, and so many more. These workshops allowed another avenue for students to be able to connect with other students in a safe space as well as learn additional information about topics they might not normally have chosen to look into. Speaking of the workshops, at this time, I would like to highlight that there were three students within the program cycle that not only had perfect attendance during instructional time, but also for all the workshops that me and Jennifer provided. These students are Tiffany Chan, Vivian Mathis, and Savannah Alanis. Congratulations on your huge accomplishment on being able to attend all the workshops and also not miss a single day of instructional time. So now we will go to the main event, the beginning of the presentations. So I would like to queue up the Power Avengers with their presentation, Not All Wounds Are Visible.
Do we begin?
Yes.
Hello, I am Malaika Nazir. I reside in District One and I attend Intercom High School.
Hello, my name is Nesma Walayali. I reside in District One.
Hi, I'm Avery Dana. I reside in District Three at St. Christian Brothers High School.
Hello, I'm Alia Boyd. I reside in District Five and I attend St. McCauley High School.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Fox-Louis. I reside in District Six and I attend Sacramento Charter High School.
Hello, I'm Lillian Hun. I reside in District Six and I attend West Campus High School.
Hello, I'm Teresa Sabala. I reside in District Six and I attend West Campus High School.
Good afternoon, I'm Malik Powell. I reside in District Six and I attend Hiram Johnson High School.
Hello, I'm Sammy Wong. I reside in District Seven and I attend John F. Kennedy High School.
Hello, I am Shua Yang. I reside in District Eight and I attend John F. Kennedy High School.
Good afternoon to the Council, City Clerk Cuppy, City Manager Chan, and Mayor Steinberg. Once again, my name is Nesma Walayali, and I reside in District One, and I would like to thank you so much for giving us the time to present you today. We appreciate you making the effort to listen to the concerns of the youth. As a people of youth, we feel that one of the biggest problems facing our demographics in Sacramento is the lack of youth mental health awareness in the area. I've created a PSA and billboard to present our concerns that we would like to share with you.
Mental health for youth is a major problem in California. And 63.9% of youth with mental health issues don't receive the services they need in order to get better. But how do you define youth mental health, and why is it important?
Mental health is our psychological well-being. It is the stability of our moods and the well-being of our internal environments.
So what is stigma regarding youth mental health?
Stigma is the undesirability around an idea, situation, or person, and can make youth perceive that their emotions and mental health are invalid.
Stigma causes a sense of discrimination against those living with mental illness and is a widespread problem. This underlying social stigma around mental wellness discourages youth from getting the help they need.
Making resources widely known and accessible will be beneficial for our youth by encouraging them to improve their mental health.
There are many resources for youth mental health in the community, but unfortunately, most youth don't even know they exist. If local community mental health resources are brought awareness, we can encourage youth to reach out for help and improve their mental health.
Some resources youth can utilize are the local Sacramento groups like the Stores, Stop Stigma Sacramento, Blue Cancers, Peer Group, the 211 Hotline, and many more on the Sacramento County Mental Health Services website.
Youth is our future, and we need to make sure we are able to support them during difficult times they may be facing.
So let's end the stigma and support youth mental health, because not all wounds are visible.
Once again, this is our billboard, and it represents the internal wounds of those dealing with mental health issues. As stated in our PSA, mental health is our physiological state. It is the stability of our moods and the well-being of our internal environment. Mental health negation is a big trend among youth in our area, even though there are many resources out there that aim to serve youth in difficult times. In a survey we conducted among our fellow Summer at City Hall participants and among our friends, we found that an astonishing 84% of participants knew somebody with mental health issues, and yet only 54% of responders said that they felt comfortable enough to reach out for mental health help if they needed it. Furthermore, 59% of youth with major diagnosed depression do not receive the mental health treatment they need. Unlike physical disability, mental issues aren't visible to the outside world, and thus, it is so easy for these issues to be neglected. It could not be more clear that youth mental health is a growing problem, and that more and more youth are going undiagnosed and untreated. What we want from local officials in power like yourselves is to bring awareness to the multitude of youth mental health resources in a community through billboards, like the one we've made for you today, advertisements, and outreach. This will not only connect many youth to the resources that can serve them, but through more exposure with this topic, the stigma around mental health treatment can decrease, thus making youth mental health attentiveness a more welcoming and normalized idea. Now I'm going to pass your attention to my peer Sammy.
Hello, my name is Sammy Wong. I reside in District Seven and I attend John F. Kennedy High School. Mental health is often written off as growing pains, which makes it hard for youth to seek help. Now I would like to read a testimonial from a fellow student who wanted to share their story but also remained anonymous. Quote, "As a young person, I went through a period in my life where my mental health became increasingly unstable, and where I was dealing with a lot of mental health issues. In the early stages of my journey with my mental health, I experienced what many other youth with mental health issues experience, to the effect of rejecting all help and treatment. But after too much time spent without improving, I finally found and accepted the treatment that I needed and started my road to recovery. After battling the stigma and shame around mental health, I finally shared my experience with other youth in staff at my school and found that other students began to ask me where they should go to get similar help, because most didn't know where to go for help or felt safe in doing so. This made it apparent to me that other members in my community that I interact with every day were beneath the surface going through similar internal struggles despite what I saw on the outside. It became a personal reminder to me that not all wounds are visible," end quote. After doing research for our project, I found an abundant amount of mental health resources for youth, but the number, but the problem that we encountered is that none of us knew they existed before. The obstacle is not the lack of resources, but the lack of awareness of those services. Now I'm going to pass the mic to Malaika.
Hello, my name is Malaika Nazir. I am from District One and I attend Intercom High School. I would like to emphasize the importance of this critical information, because a vast majority of youth dealing with difficult mental illnesses also have to deal with the beliefs of stigma. Stigma and discrimination against those with living with mental illnesses are widespread and reaching to schools and institutions of learning, employment, housing, healthcare, and the media. Stigma is the largest obstacle to recovery, treatment, and societal acceptance for people living with mental illness. The ongoing stigma that surrounds mental illness is especially, especially in youth, can lead to further negative effects that can consequently lead to a lifetime of issues, and it's critical that youth be psychologically stable as you transcend into adulthood. When shame is removed from the equation, people with mental illness from a readily streaked treatment achieve recovery and engage in meaningful activities. We hope that the stigma can be reduced to exposure to mental health resources with increased advertisements on a city level, bringing awareness to resources that we mentioned in our PSA, such as local Sacramento groups as a source, Stop Stigma Sacramento, the 211 Hotlines, and many more on the Sacramento County Mental Health Services website. Do youth are our future, and we need to support them now, especially to this devastating pandemic, where keeping our mental health stable can prove to be increasingly challenging. So let's end the stigma and support youth mental health. Now I'm going to pass the mic back to Nesma.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to us, and to reiterate what we ask of you today is to take this information to heart and help bring awareness to the youth mental health resources in the community through our PSA and billboard. This effort is sure to decrease community stigma and encourage more youth to get the help they need, because not all wounds are visible. Thank you, and this will conclude our presentation. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Well, let's, let me ask, are there questions from the members? I just want to thank you for choosing this subject, which I think is near and dear to the hearts of so many people, so many families, so many young people in Sacramento, and you're absolutely right, it starts with breaking the stigma through public awareness and encouraging people to tell their stories. Where do you want to put these billboards up?
I can answer that question. We suggest to put these billboards up on near highways and frequently used roads.
So Ms. Wimberly, I wonder as a follow-up if we can work with our Public Works folks and see if we might actually either work with some of the existing Stop the Stigma campaign, but whether we might put up one of these billboards in and around our city that really focuses on young people.
Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to tag on to that comment, because I think it's brilliant. The city has electronic billboards in our portfolio that we're allowed to place PSAs on, and so we can work with our public affairs staff to get those messages out. And I know that a lot of the billboard companies have been looking for messages just like this. So every time we've approached them, they've been willing to do it, so I think our staff could also work with you, whether it's through Clear Channel, which is one of the larger entities, or Marquee, which is another one, to ensure that your message gets out. And the electronic billboards are great, because lots of different people can see them, and they don't cost that much to, they don't cost anything for us to get your message into, so congratulations. And it is a really, really important issue, more than ever right now, and you all deserve a lot of credit for taking the torch and passing it to us.
Mr. Mayor, can I say, can I say a word also? Yes, of course. Yeah, my apologies for this being very loud. I thought it was a great presentation, really appreciate it. There's a lot going on. We've had an initial conversation with Patrick Kennedy about starting a youth mental health board for the county and the city, and I'd love to follow up with as many of the young people that just presented as possible about opportunities for them to be advocates for this issue.
Mayor, I'll be really quick. I just wanted to tell you guys, great job. I, several of you are from Intercom or live in District One, and I know you guys know that we had two kids in Natomas take their lives during the first part of COVID, and, and so I'm really glad you guys are putting yourselves out there. I also thought your billboard and your tagline, that not all wounds are visible, was really good, really poignant, so good job with that, and great presentation, good work.
I too, Mayor. Wanted to let them know they did a great job, very impressive how you worked together, and how each person, you know, played their role in letting us get the message. And now I know the commitment, I hear the commitment in your voices and in your heart as far as getting the message out to the broader community, especially youth that are your age, to reduce the stigma and the shame associated with this mental illness, so great job. I hope you continue to be an advocate for mental health and other issues like that, and continue to do the things that you've done for the summer. If there's one thing that you felt you learned through this whole process, the one thing that you learned that you didn't know before, what would that one thing be?
I can start with an answer. I think, as we mentioned briefly in our presentation, I think what surprised us the most was just how many youth mental health resources there were in the community. Through our research, we found lots of different outlets and community centers that can help youth, you know, facing difficult times. And the struggle that we found was that none of us had known that they existed before. And so I think that that was the most surprising thing, because as a youth, it often feels like there's sort of nowhere to turn, but upon further research, we found that there were many outlets in the community to help youth in need.
So I would agree with you that that was something that also surprised me, as I learned a lot when I heard that. So I'm also advising each of you to take the message to your school districts, not just your school, but to your school districts, and find vehicles within the school district that can get the message out to all the schools, because I think you have a powerful message, and the school districts need to be one of the ways in order to get that message out. Thank you again.
Thank you. All right, thank you very, very much. Why don't we move on to the second presentation? Please.
They will be coming on, and they're going to be talking about the promotion of the new Youth Link website that is going, the goal is to get it launched. Hopefully, next week, they've been working diligently, not this group, but they're working on a campaign to promote this new website that's coming out called Youth Link. So here come the adrenaline's.
Hi, my name is Abigail Lee. I go to Hiram Johnson High School, and I live in District Six.
Hello, I'm Hannah Yun, and I go to Natomas Charter School, PFA, and I live in District One.
Hello, I'm Julie Gonzalez. I go to West Campus High School, and I live in District Six.
Good afternoon, my name is Malika Hassan. I attend Intercom High School, and I live in District One.
Hello, my name is Phoebe Lee, and I go to Vision and Education. I live in District Eight. And unfortunately, Evelyn Elias cannot make it, so I will, I will be doing our introduction. And hello, my name is Evelyn Elias, and I live, I attend Intercom High School, and I live in District One.
Hello, I'm Tiffany Chan. I go to Intercom High School, and I live in District One.
Hello, my name is Valerie Vu. I go to Grant Union High School, and I live in District Two.
Hello, my name is Vivian Mathis. I attend Intercom High School, and I live in District One.
Good afternoon, City Council. Thank you for having us. I'm Natalie Nielsen. I go to Rosemont High School, and I live in District Six. We're the Adrenalins, and we're here to talk to you about promoting the Youth Link SAC website.
A lack of accessibility and knowledge of resources is a problem among the youth in the city of Sacramento. The Youth Link SAC website would help address this issue. Gypsy or youth parks and community enrichment will continue adding resources to the website to ensure that the opportunities made available are up to date.
In a survey taken of 90 youth in Sacramento, 48% of them said they did not have a place to find information about how to get involved in the community. This website provides a centralized location for youth to find opportunities, but a survey of 90 people revealed that 95% of youth would use. Users of the website can apply filters to find programs, activities, and jobs that are directly relevant to their interests.
My team is connected via PSA to show the various ways how today's youth community, inner community. In this PSA, we demonstrate how the Youth Link SAC website will make it easier for students to find resources online. Here's our PSA.
We live in a day and age of social media and mass communication, but today's tech-savvy youth often struggle to find resources. For youth who want to be involved in their community, finding opportunities such as internships, city programs, volunteer work, or after-school activities can be a headache. Let's take a closer look at what's happening in the youth community today. Hi Tiffany, how are you?
Hey Vivian, I'm good. What have you been up to?
Well, lately, I've been looking for an internship or after-school program to join. What about you?
Me too, but finding information about local organizations and youth programs is just so hard and time-consuming.
Tell me about it. I'm so tired of all the endless scrolling and searching through bajillion websites.
I know, and at this rate, I'll never find the program that I'm looking for.
Yeah, I think I might just give up on my searching. Why is it so difficult to find ways to be involved in the community?
Well, I've got to go now, but good luck on your searching.
You too. Talk to you later Tiffany. Whoa, this website is great. I have to tell Tiffany about this.
Youth Link is exactly what today's youth needs to help find opportunities in their community. Youth Link is focused on connecting youth to local programs, youth organizations, after-school activities, and volunteer work. These search filters makes it easier for youth These search filters makes it easier for users to find options for a particular age, category, special population, or delivery mode. Users can even search by zip code for options in their area. Youth Link is a website that is making resources accessible and connecting the youth to endless opportunities. Finding youth resources has never been simpler. Youth Link is quick, simple, and reliable.
We recommend our city puts up billboards publicizing the Youth Link SAC website to help reach youth and youth around the city. Youth will see the billboard when they drive by and, and learn about the Youth Link SAC website. My team and I put together this billboard to promote the website and its relationship with our wonderful Sacramento. It's meant to target youth looking for an easier way to find resources and opportunities. Our slogan is a friendly reminder that you, as a youth in Sacramento, in Sacramento, matter along with the decisions and choices you make to better our community. This is our billboard.
By promoting civic engagement amongst youth, we can ensure that the next generation of youth become leaders that can spearhead the city of Sacramento into a brighter future. By implementing this website on a larger scale in the city, we will be promoting youth to learn the skills that they need to thrive in an engaging and competitive workforce.
I apologize for the, for the technical difficulties. My name is Evelyn Evelyn Stalaskis. I attend Intercom High School and I live in District One. After years of this website's launch, we recommend an app to be created to display the same information. Eighty-seven percent of respondents said that they would likely to use a website that had the same resource as a website. An app would allow the information to be easily accessed by you. We also recommend more billboards to be put up, publicizing the website and app. Thank you for listening to our presentation. At this time, are there any questions?
Thank you, Adrenalins.
Chris?
Uh huh.
So I wanted to ask Evelyn, what kind of resources would it take to build an app?
When we discussed with one of the coordinators, they mentioned to us that it is a little bit more costly and more developed to develop one, but it is going to be more accessible and more. The only thing that matters is that it is more costly. And with that, we believe that even though it takes more time to develop, we believe that it could be, it could be accomplished after the website is launched. Would anyone like to add on to that?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Tiffany, go ahead.
But I would like to add on, pardon me, but I would like to add on that although when we were talking with one of like the, I believe, project directors, when we were talking about learning more about this website and if it's feasible to actually turn it into an app, I would see it more as an investment. Because honestly, when I'm talking to my friends and you know, we're just trying to get involved in our community, a lot of people don't know about all the various programs that are there. So I think that by making it into an app and having it very easily accessible, because a website is good, but an app is probably going to be much better. And it's going to be able to reach out to more students. It's just easier to share. So it's more of an investment into like the next generation.
Well, thank you for that Tiffany. I personally think that an app would be very valuable. You know, look, almost every kid is glued to an, to a phone. And apps are very immediately accessible. Certainly more effective than billboards, probably more effective than websites. And I think it probably would be worth looking into to move forward with this project. But thanks for your presentation.
Do we have any additional comments or questions for the Adrenalins?
Yeah, I was very impressed with the presentation, especially when you talked about the ability to search by zip code. Now I have my own reasons as to why I think you did that, but I'd like to hear from you.
Yeah, I would like to answer. So we talked with the manager of the project that is creating the website. And she was really happy about like how they were able to get all the filters and the zip code searching. And the biggest reason like why that was an important part was because a lot of times, the programs we're looking to join are kind of within our area, you know, they're close by. We're not going to drive like hour away just to volunteer. We're going to want something kind of close by that we can really commit to. So that's a really main part and a really important reason for having the ability to search by zip code. Any other questions?
If I could add on to that, I also think that the zip code function of the website is super important because I think it maintains like equity within the app. Because a lot of programs, a lot of just youth resources in general are concentrated more closer to downtown. So I think by making it accessible to all zip codes, it can clearly highlight to students who maybe live in South SAC or up in North SAC or in, you know, East SAC, that there are resources near them and they can still be involved in the community in a way that they can easily get to and that they don't have to go too far to communicate to.
Mayor, real quick, I just want to tell you guys, great job on your presentation. And I, for me, when I'm watching presentations, I especially like when something doesn't go exactly the way you planned it, to watch how you react. And you guys handled it so well, just a little like, hey, little glitch and moving on. And you guys just kept going and you knew your material really well. So, good job. That's exactly the right thing to do. A plus on that. Good work.
Thank you, Adrenalins. Now we are going to be moving on to our Chilling Chinchillas. They're going to be talking about free Wi-Fi access awareness for the community.
Hello, my name is Lee Tay. I'm a resident of District One and I'm a student at Intercom High School.
Hello, my name is Francis Bornaha. I am a resident of District One and I also attend, I am also a student at Intercom High School.
Hello, my name is Natalie Sprinkle. I'm a resident of District One and I'm a student at Intercom High School.
Hello, my name is Javonan Navarrete. I am a resident of District Two and I attend Grant Union High School.
Hello, I'm Andre Nava. I'm a resident of District Three and I attend Intercom High School.
Hello, my name is Bao Tao. I am a resident of District Five and I am a student at Hiram Johnson High School.
Hello, my name is Jesse Campos Rivera and I am a resident at District Six and I am a student at Hiram Johnson High School.
Good afternoon, City Council members. City Clerk, Midi Cuppy. City Manager, Howard Shan. And City Mayor, Daryl Steinberg. My name is Lincoln Yang. I'm a resident of District Seven and I'm a student attending West Campus High School. We are the Chilling Chinchillas and we would like to thank you. And we appreciate deeply that you have given your time to hear our concerns regarding our community. In a time of global pandemic and social distancing, regulations have been put into place to ensure the safety of American citizens, shifting many aspects of our lives onto an online platform. Despite it being 2020, a time nuanced by its abundance of technology, a digital divide between citizens is still a reality. That is why we believe it is very important that people have readily available internet access. I will now pass the mic over to Lee Tay.
According to Linda Darling-Hammon, President of the State Board of Education, about twenty percent of California students, about 1.2 million, do not have access to a high-speed, to high-speed internet or a device at home. This puts about 1.2 million students at an academic disadvantage. According to a 2019 study from the Public Policy Institute of California, residents without internet access are disproportionately low-income in rural areas or black or Latino. Students with shared devices or lack of internet may not be able to participate in distance learning. They may also suffer from issues like not being able to get food deliveries or pandemic updates, things that many people take for granted. I will now pass the mic over to Jovanna.
This project came about us wanting to raise awareness of readily available internet access. The reason being was because it is very necessary now with this pandemic going on. Also, it would help everyone communicate now that everything is becoming of the use of technology. In addition, this project will allow all of our community to stay connected with society while social distancing. And here is the video we put together about the topic of spreading awareness for Wi-Fi locations.
Citizens of Sacramento are still struggling with their lack of internet access.
With the pandemic going on, everyone is required to stay home, which means that all schools and businesses will be closed and will be working from home, which means that it would be virtually. And also means that you will have to or need to have Wi-Fi access at home.
But don't worry, we have a solution for that.
There are places like fast food restaurants, cafes, Sacramento Public Libraries, and city colleges.
Verizon designed and manages free high-speed Wi-Fi points at parks throughout the city of Sacramento.
The primary goal of the Wi-Fi solution is to provide wireless access that some citizens may not have access to.
Public Wi-Fi.
For everyone.
Internet access for anyone.
Hello, my name is Andre Nava and I'm from District Three. And here's our billboard. We've collaborated to make our billboard feel connected. Adding our choices of colors such as red, which represents all our digital platforms and the technology that flows throughout our world. And blue represents our uprising for Wi-Fi for all. We live in a generation that keeps updating technology so that we can come together and stay connected. But unfortunately, some people don't have the luxury to have Wi-Fi in their homes. And to, due to the pandemic, some areas with public Wi-Fi are available, such as Starbucks. Many opportunities are lost due to that and many youth can't be online when it's needed most. Also, a number of places are in areas called white spots, which means big service providers can't offer adequate internet coverage to support internet needs. So schools have only a few options, traditional paper packets or virtual instruction. And since this school year will be online and virtual instruction is big, school districts are hustling to get their devices into the hands of students to resume their education, which still requires every student to have access to a computer and quality internet. I will now pass the mic to Francis.
So far, the city of Sacramento has partnered with Verizon to provide Wi-Fi to 27 parks around the city. Two hundred people can use the Wi-Fi and still have good internet. There were also programs like Kids Connect and a consolidated communications free hotspot access, which only gave six months of free Wi-Fi. And companies like AT&amp;T and Verizon, which only gave two months of free Wi-Fi hotspots. We believe that these programs like these should continue to provide free Wi-Fi for citizens who do not have any, so that people will be able to work and learn from home and also connect with other people online. We would love and appreciate your support if you show our billboard and PSA to citizens of Sacramento. Thank you for listening to our presentation. And are there any questions?
Thank you for listening to our presentation.
Hey Lincoln? Lincoln?
Yes, sir.
And you are the group, tell me how you came up with the 1.2 million students that are academically at a disadvantage right now?
Lee, would you like to answer that?
Yes, so on, so it was actually a statistic given about a year ago from Linda Darling-Hammon, the President of the State Board of Education.
Okay. And she was talking about the state or talking about Sacramento?
It's the state of California.
Okay. Did you have any information as it relates to Sacramento? The disadvantage that's here in Sacramento? Were you able to pull those kind of statistics together?
Most of the statistics.
I'm sorry, let me tell you.
Sorry. Most of the statistics we found weren't exactly updated because we knew that due to the pandemic, we had multiple attempts to bring Wi-Fi access to many families in need. So we didn't want to put in something that would be not true at this point.
But even with what you put in, 1.2 for the state, which was last year's information, more than likely that number has grown as well. So your point is well made. And we can all imagine the impact that Sacramento has, being one of the largest cities in the state of California. Which makes your argument even more powerful.
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, to what Councilmember Jennings is saying, this is, you, you all chose such a relevant topic. This is something we as the council have been discussing over the last few weeks too, how we can partner with Comcast or other providers to make sure that there's access to the internet for everybody and not just any internet. Because you guys know, not all internet access is equal, right? If it's not good enough, you're not going to be able to do those classes and it's going to be really complicated and hard. And for those of you that are, go to school in Natomas, you know, the kids out here can get a laptop, but not every school district is making laptops available. So what if there's no laptop in the house or there's more than one kid in the house and only one computer and the class starts at the same time? So all of these equity issues are really important and, and really relevant right this moment. So it's great that you all are thinking about that, about how to help others and siblings and younger people. And stay tuned in that because you all can play a really big role with helping younger people with homework and with tutoring and just showing them how to do things, even if you have to do it remotely. So proud of you guys for choosing that topic.
Thank you, Chilling Chinchillas. So we're going to be moving on to Team Avengers. They will be talking about streamlining the Housing Choice Voucher to decrease homelessness.
Hello, my name is Alejandra Maderos. I reside in District Six and I attend West Campus High School.
Hello, my name is Argent Gill. I reside in District One and I attend Intercom High School.
Hello, my name is Caleb Rahas. I live in District One and also attend Intercom High School.
Hello, my name is Donna Castillo. I reside in District Two and I attend Grant Union High School.
Hello, my name is Kailin Chong. I live in District One and I attend NP3 High School.
Hello, my name is Makia Ta. I live in District Eight and I attend Hiram Johnson High School.
Hello, my name is Obet Kaihas. I live in District Five and I attend High School.
Hello, my name is Sam Hemisath. I live in District Four and I attend CK and McClatchen High School.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Argent Gill and we are Team Avengers. We thank you all for being here today to listen to our presentation. The community issue we present to you today is affordable housing and homelessness. The amount of housing vouchers distributed to those who need it is not enough to sustain the entire population of people who are struggling to find affordable housing units. This causes applicants to endure an extensive wait time, typically one to three years to get their voucher fully processed. In addition, landlords may also not accept the housing vouchers to those who have them due to how they believe it will result in a loss of money on their end. Statistics from the US Census Bureau show that the appropriate amount of money for someone to spend on their rent should be about one-third of their total income. But with the increase in housing prices in the entire city of Sacramento, it's getting harder to maintain this amount and not go over it. The homeless population in Sacramento has increased by approximately nineteen percent between the years of 2017 and 2019. Additionally, lack of affordable housing is one of the leading causes for youth homelessness in the city. This means that innocent children live in danger on the streets because they are unable to have a roof over their heads. And now my colleague, Kailin Chong, will introduce her PSA, which goes more into depth on this issue.
Good evening, Council members. Good evening, council members. It is evident that lack of affordable housing is a major issue. The extensive amount of time it takes to finally receive an affordable housing voucher can lead to low-income residents becoming homeless. Our public service announcement goes further into detail on the severity of this issue and why there must be immediate action taken on it. And now our PSA.
You can wait in lines at the DMV. You can wait with a friend, but homelessness, it can't wait.
Homelessness is a serious problem throughout the city of Sacramento. Over five thousand individuals and families already don't have a roof over their heads. And around fifty thousand inhabitants in Sacramento may face a similar fate because of how long it takes to get affordable housing vouchers. According to the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness, the state of California alone had an estimate of one hundred thirty thousand who experienced homelessness in January of twenty nineteen.
So what exactly is homelessness?
Someone who is living in an emergency shelter or outdoors or any place that's not meant for human habitation.
We just have an absolute shortage of publicly supportive affordable housing.
What is the main factor contributing to youth homelessness within the Sacramento community?
If I had to choose one thing, it would be the lack of affordable housing in Sacramento where
We have the limited resources.
Housing Authority Supervisor of Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Cecilia Gibson confirms that the waitlist for Section Eight housing vouchers can on average take up to one to three years.
That's actually very accurate. It does take a couple years. And people while waiting, some may not even get relentless.
So how do we actually deal with this problem?
Director of Wind Youth Services Robin Rosehammer suggests that Sacramento housing agencies need to open more houses for availability.
Frequently, we open far few of, too, far too few affordable housing units at a time. So we need to go to scale much more quickly. And that increase in the number of people who are eligible for housing and can get in should see an immediate um decrease in the pressure that's placed on other social services.
Robin Rosehammers continues by saying that affordable housing needs to be subsidized.
So with affordable housing, you have to have subsidies along the way to be able to compensate the people who own the land, the people who have the materials, who are building the structures, the people who eventually sell the properties. So how those subsidies get assigned is very important.
Stephen Does also suggests that a massive investment is needed in order to support affordable housing.
And so how do we get there? Uh, it's, it's through massive investment. Um, and that would be the approach to sort of working within our existing system as opposed to, you know, throwing the system out and starting over again.
Expert Stefan Does, Regional Director of Mercy Housing, agrees with a possible solution that by offering tax breaks, landlords would be more open to the idea of accepting housing choice vouchers.
That's an incredible idea. Yeah, I think that tax incentives in particular uh, to owners of rental housing have proven to be very effective. There's lots of things that could be done around um tax structure to help incentivize.
If, if we decide that if we're going to be a, a society that cares about its citizens and has a conscience, then everybody should have a place to live.
By opening more houses for availability, investing in affordable housing, giving financial incentives, and reducing the time of housing choice vouchers, we are able to help more Sacramento citizens who experience homelessness, because housing shouldn't have a wait time.
Our team would now like to showcase our billboard. We wanted to illustrate an individual receiving a housing choice voucher along with our statement next to the image in order to emphasize the flaw in the process of receiving a housing voucher. Thank you, and I will now direct your attention to Samuel Hemisath for our closing remarks.
Thank you, Kayleen, for that wonderful presentation. As you can see, issues of affordable housing are far reaching in Sacramento. The recent influx of citizens into Sacramento has only exacerbated the problem as housing developers simply haven't been able to keep up with the skyrocketing demand for new houses. As a result, home prices have increased upwards of one hundred thousand dollars over the past five years. The loss of home affordability can be seen directly in the homeless population increase, as my colleague Arjun showed earlier. Now you may be asking yourself, how can we solve this issue? Well, there are a few answers. This council recently approved one hundred million dollars towards the goal of developing more housing within Sacramento. And while this is a great first step, one hundred million dollars is simply not enough for Sacramento to build its way out of the current housing crisis. Thus, the first potential solution is for more funding to be allocated towards affordable housing development within Sacramento. Now we reach our second proposed solution relating to housing vouchers. As my colleague Ar- as my colleague Arjun explained earlier, housing vouchers are incredibly inefficient in the status quo. Not only do they take a long time to acquire, but landlords routinely turn down individuals offering to pay rent with a housing voucher. In the case of housing vouchers, there are two solutions to fix these two issues. The first is an expansion of budget for the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. A permanent expansion of this department would allow for the supply of housing vouchers to meet the rising demand for these same vouchers. The waiting time could be drastically reduced, taking more Sacramentoans off of the streets and into financial stability. As for landlords, we suggest that landlords be offered more tax breaks and more incentives in order to lift the taboo of accepting a housing voucher tenant. This policy would open up new areas of the market to tend to vouchers and speed along the process for housing in Sacramento to become more affordable. The communities in Sacramento need these strategies implemented immediately, because affordable housing can't wait. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, um your team tackled one of the toughest issues facing the city of Sacramento, but also the county of Sacramento. And when you talk about tax subsidies, uh, they would really likely have to be property tax subsidies, I think, coming from um generated by the county. This is a very difficult and expensive issue, as you found out. Housing is indeed in short supply and that upsets our marketplace. Um, you know, the issues around homelessness are something that the mayor and I work on a lot. Uh, they're, they're very deep and very complex issues, you know, especially once somebody has been homeless, has been unhoused for a period of time. They struggle with a myriad of challenges. Uh, mental health and, and drug addiction being two of the most prevalent ones. So even to make people successful in housing if you have it, takes a lot of work. I just want to thank you for bringing this issue forward. You know, if you live in Sacramento and you get around on the streets, virtually anywhere in the city, you'll encounter a lot of homeless camps these days. And they can be pretty difficult to look at and uh sometimes even hard to navigate by. But uh the other thing I wanted to mention is that because of the pandemic, our homeless population has grown another twenty percent in the last few months. Very dramatic spike. Um, so indeed the, the issues are compounded. But I really appreciate your work on this and your willingness to focus on something that's really important to the city and meaningful to, to all of us. Thanks so much.
Hi, uh, we're back here. Um any other members? Okay. Let's move to the next presentation, please.
Thank you, Team Avengers. We'd like to welcome the Quarantines, which are going to be talking about citywide youth voting advocacy in a billboard and public service announcement.
Well, my name is Acacia Jo- Hello, my name is Acacia Jones. I attend Ahram Johnson High School and I live in District Six.
Hi, my name's Kali Namor. I go to West Campus High School and I'm from District Four.
Hello, my name is Giovanni Glenda Reyes. I go to CK McClashing High School and I'm from District Four.
Hi, my name is Jade Nguyen. I go to Grant Mean High School and I'm from District Two.
Hi, my name is Mustafa Solan. I go to Intercom High School and I live in District One.
Hi, my name is Sabrina Chang. I'm from West Campus High School and I live in District Five.
Hi, my name is Cindy Ahucha. I go to John F. Kennedy High School and I'm from District Seven.
Hi, my name is Tia Trin. I go to Miraloma High School and I'm from District One.
Good afternoon. My name is Trisha Nagin. I go to Intercom High School and I live in District One. Thank you, city council members, City Manager Chan, City Clerk Cuppy, and Mayor Steinberg for listening to our group today. We are the Quarantines and will be, we will be presenting on citywide youth voter advocacy. We want to start by mentioning some issues that matter.
The environment.
Equality for all.
When we think of local issues, voting isn't something that comes to mind. Today, we aim to talk to city council about the power of a vote.
For youth to have an impact and make a change, we must encourage them to take the initiative to vote. Every vote counts to make a difference, especially with the presidential election coming up in a few months. Casting a vote is very important.
But many young people don't vote at local, state, or even federal elections. While there are many barriers such as language, lack of voter ID requirements, and felony disenfranchisement, one of the biggest issues is the lack of knowledge about voting. Voting can bring such a great power to our community, but many youth don't know the power it holds.
Youth are not educated about their power to vote and are not interested in changing the policies around them. According to Heather Diddy, the Outreach Manager for Sacramento Office of Elections, there was a seventeen point one percent youth turnout at the twenty sixteen election and an eight point eight percent youth turnout in the twenty eighteen. We can see that the youth turnout was greater in the presidential election than in the general elections.
This is something that needs to change as the general and local elections are the most responsible for bringing changes within communities. Encourage the youth to vote. Youth are the future. We're ultimately going to be the decision makers. Educating the youth to vote is the fundamental change that we want to make.
High school curriculum is focused mainly on academic subjects, leaving little to no room about opportunities outside of school. Politics are brushed aside in the classroom, and since teachers are discouraged to express their political standpoints, it is likely they will not bring politics into the classroom at all.
The youth vote has often been downplayed by adults, but when in reality, the youth between ages eighteen to twenty-four can account for almost half the voting population. An article published by PBS stated that youth voter turnout has always been low for a variety of reasons, most centering around the lack of civic education providing, provided in schools. Educating students earlier provides them with a better understanding of how their vote can make a difference, whether it be passing a law or voting for someone they believe in.
Mock elections are a beneficial step towards preparing high school students to vote when they are eighteen. They encourage students to be more educated about the government locally and nationally. In addition, when mock elections are hosted at schools, students have the opportunity to pre-register when they are sixteen years of age.
The policy our group is advocating for would expand upon the city's civic engagement unit programs that are already in place, such as the Sacramento Youth Commission and Summer at City Hall. We want to further encourage students to pre-register to vote and educate them on how to exercise their rights within voting. It would inspire students to learn more about the election processes and become more comfortable with voting at a younger age. Choosing not to vote is like throwing away your voice and power. It is crucial for youth to be aware of what they can do in politics if they are going to be the ones leading in the future. Next, we have created a PSA for you all to watch, and we ask you, city council, that you demonstrate this PSA citywide.
Welcome to the Quarantines meeting regarding youth voting. Log in, sit back, and enjoy the show. Why is it important for the youth to vote? J.F.K. once said that "The ignorance of one voter in a democracy impairs the security of all." We as youth face many challenges today that may be threatening to our future. A lot of factors in the world impact us more than any other generation. It is our responsibility to contribute a change, and one of the easiest and biggest ways to do that is through voting. It can be as simple as mailing in your ballot or even going to a voting booth. Change starts with you. Your future lies in the hands of youth vote.
The logistics of past youth voter turnouts have been as low as fifteen percent. In California, only ten percent of youth voted during elections. This number is even lower in midterm and local elections. The United States has one of the lowest youth turnouts in all of the developed world. We still have a very long way to go. Some of the biggest factors contributing to these low youth turnouts is the lack of a civics education and absence of motivation and information. We surveyed around seventy high school students and around sixty-two percent of eligible students said that they were not aware of pre-registration to vote. This shows that most students are uneducated about registering and voting by mail.
By teaching students in high school how to register or pre-register, connecting the bridge between politics and constituents with helpful information, Q and As and their political representatives, and hosting mock elections, we can play an imperative role in the future of this democracy. A lot of times, younger people feel helpless and frustrated when it comes to trust in the government. We see things happen in the news all around and feel like we are powerless and cannot contribute to any type of change. The agency we lack can create a huge disconnect and distrust with the governing parties. The same frustration grows into the sentiment that our vote doesn't matter, even when we get older. Your vote does matter.
The current political climate is a real-life example about why youth vote matters and how younger constituents have the power to create a positive impact and a new political paradigm.
By having a week dedicated to civic education every midterm and election year, as well as having representatives in high school that can help the youth get informed and register, we can have a salient impact on how our peers can get involved as well as make sound and educated decisions for their own future.
Demand the justice youth seek and start with pre-registering to vote.
Expanding this program in the civic education engagement unit, such as this, will allow students to learn more about the government and policies around them in a time of global crisis. Students will still be able to learn and understand how to pass policies to make the world around them a better place. Lastly, we have come up with a billboard to be put up citywide. We hope, we hope, uh, we hope youth will see this billboard and take the initiative to learn more about voting and how they can make a change.
So now we ask the city council to use their power to vote for this expansion, to put up our billboards, and to educate students on their power and ability to vote, and ultimately bring about change in our community. Thank you, city council members, City Manager Chan, City Clerk Cuppy, and Mayor Steinberg for giving us your time and giving us the opportunity to speak to you today. This concludes our presentation. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Another great presentation. Are there questions from members of the city council or even members of the or members of the city uh management staff, management team?
I have a question, a comment.
Yes, Councilman Carr.
Well, first of all, thank you for tackling this subject. This is the most important thing that we do as citizens. The most important responsibility that we have is to vote. And the vote is, uh, has been hard fought for. When this country was established, only white landowners could vote. And it took centuries to uh allow women to have the franchise. And uh, almost that long, several centuries for blacks to be able to vote. So to not exercise the vote is astounding to me, why anyone would not do it. And by your highlighting to the youth of our city that this is an important thing for them to do, that this has a um this helps determine that their future, the future of our city, and how we live as a society. So uh, I commend you for bringing this to our attention. And yes, we will definitely work with you on making sure that youth know about the importance of voting. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Larry's exactly right that the ability to have an an unrestricted right to vote is the foundation of our democracy and our very freedom in America. It is your power. And youth need to understand that if you want to shape your world, you can do it through voting. It's a really powerful message. I also wanted to say that I really appreciate you bringing to light that there is no civics education currently in an awful lot of schools. This is a really um negative turn of events. Certainly, when I went to high school, every kid had to take civics. And it wasn't a half hour. It was a full semester in which you learned about our democratic system, you learned about voting, you learned about the structure of local and state government. These are really important aspects of your education. And I'm really proud of you for reaching for this topic and exploring it a little deeper. If you can convince your youth colleagues to vote, If you can convince your youth colleagues to vote, you will change America. Thanks.
Uh, Mayor, I just want to join my col-, I want to join my colleagues in, uh, supporting their comments. But I also want to, um, make an important point, and I think in your presentation, you said the change starts with you. And each one of you, you started the change in putting this presentation together, and now you have it, and you've made the presentation to us. It talks about the lack of civic education. It talks about the lack of knowledge about, um, pre-registering to vote. All those things, you let hus-, us know. Um, but I think you have to take a roadshow now, and you have to take this roadshow to the school districts, Natomas Unified School District, Sac City Unified School District, Twin Rivers Unified School District, and the other school districts as well. And you've got to make this presentation in front of the board members and advocate for bringing civic education back into the system. And I think it's a very important message to continue. So the message to me doesn't stop here. It starts here. It has to continue back into the schools, back into the school districts, so that the change can be made there so that our students and their parents can understand how important this is to the future of their children voting. That's my challenge to you.
Great challenge it is. Voting is everything. Anybody else? So we've got another billboard opportunity and challenge here. I mean, maybe, I wonder if there's a way to do some coalition building with, um, the earlier presentation, um, a- and, and see if there is a way to, um, potentially join forces here. You know, one thing I've always felt is that, uh, there aren't enough people holding elected officials accountable for making, for not, for not making mental health a priority. It often gets set, it's set to the side. This city council's done a really good job over these last months, making sure that, um, your voices are heard in terms of funding. Youth mental health, but that isn't true in so many places, in so many state legislatures. And maybe there's a way to, to, to connect people's voting to things that, other issues that you're trying to elevate and holding elected officials accountable. Just a thought. Okay. Let's move on to the next presentation. Thank you. That was great.
Well, thank you, the Quarantines, and, and to wrap up our final presentation today, as we all know, during this time of COVID, the concern has really focused on mental health and mental health awareness. When we were actually conducting interviews, um, for selections for Summer at Virtual City Hall Limited Edition, we actually were asking a couple of the students what some of the challenges were, um, that they saw out there when we were talking about projects, and mental health came up time and time again. So we're excited to have our final presentation tonight by Team Zodiac, and they're going to be talking about youth mental health awareness campaign.
Good afternoon. My name is Arsalie Problis. I am a student at West Campus High School, and I live in District Six.
Good afternoon. My name is Ava Ketrone. I attend West Campus High School, and I live in District Four.
Good afternoon. My name is Clea Osborne. I attend Marconi High School, and I live in District One.
Good afternoon. My name is Melanie Hleazar. I attend Hiram Johnson High School, and I live in District Six.
Hello, my name is Ryan Duratt. I attend West Campus High School, and I live in District Three.
Hello, my name is Savannah Allenese. I attend Endercombe High School, and I lived in, live in District One.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Ford. I attend Endercombe High School, and I live in District One.
Hi, my name is Tyler Chan. I attend Hiram Johnson High School, and I live in District Six.
Hello, my name is Zama Nite. I attend Endercombe High School, and I live in District One.
Hello, my name is Vanessa Avina. I attend Natomas Shutter High School, and I live in District One.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Stephanie Ford, and we are Team Zodiac. We would like to thank you all for being here today to listen to our presentation. Youth mental health is extremely important as it affects people's emotional and mental state. Left untreated, poor mental health can have many detrimental and harmful effects. There are a plethora of resources focused on helping youth improve their mental health, yet most youth are unaware of such resources. Having said that, I would like to introduce our next speaker, Ava Ketrone, to go into depth on just how important it is for youth to be aware of the mental health resources available to them.
Hello, city council members. This is Mayor Steinberg. Mental health is a universal issue that impacts everyone in some way, but in youth, it is often overlooked. As a student in Sacramento County, I've seen firsthand how little awareness there is in the student body of mental health resources. When we need support, we often don't know where to start. Our first instinct is to see our teachers or counselors, but they don't receive comprehensive mental health training. We are scared to reach out to our friends and family because we don't want them to worry. Students in need feel trapped in their mental state, but they don't have to be. I would like to call your attention to our public service announcement. Youth mental health is in a crisis. With global issues such as coronavirus, climate change, and school shootings, young people feel out of control in their environment. They need support now more than ever, but they often don't know where to find it. We conducted a survey of Sacramento County students and made some astounding discoveries. Two-thirds of students rated their mental health as moderate or poor, and one in four students said they didn't have an adult on campus they could go to. Local expert Vanessa Cuevas Romero has reasoning for this pattern.
Personally, I feel that they probably have had some negative experience down the line with an adult, and they're scared, and they're scared about how adults are going to respond. I mean, talking about how you feel is very stigmatizing in general. We're always supposed to be okay, right?
However, an intervention must begin long before a crisis, or it can cause long-term mental health instability. Seventy-five percent of adult mental health issues can be traced back to beginning before age twenty-five.
Growing up for me was a huge and difficult struggle. I ran away more than twenty times. When life started getting worse, I entered a mental hospital and thought that finding everyone who came at me wrong would provide emotional healing, but that didn't help. My struggles saddened me, and so much anger was built in me. These feelings led to depression. I was diagnosed with depression, anxiety, mood disorder, ADHD, and bipolar disorder. After that, the different schools I went to growing up weren't much help when it came to my mental health. I now realize with proper medical assistance regarding my mental illness, nothing can stop me from succeeding. Thank you.
But even more seriously, a lack of intervention can result in loss of life. According to the CDC, suicide is the second-leading cause of death in youth ages fifteen to twenty-four.
At some point, I was at that depressive, hopeless stage with my mental health. I was too afraid to talk about it with my friends and family, so I decided to go to a counselor. Over time, I realized that these counselors are only trained to help academic issues, not mental issues. I felt like I made more progress talking to a therapist for one day compared to a counselor for a month. When the school resources for mental health support aren't effective, students don't know who to turn to, and they end up taking their own lives. I lost my best friend to a situation like this. I don't want this to happen anymore else. This pattern needs to change.
Students are not being provided the support they need before they reach the point of a crisis. Fifty-one percent of surveyed Sacramento County students said they were moderately aware to completely unaware of free mental health resources they had access to. How can we increase resource awareness in the student population to prevent emergencies in the future? To solve this problem, we are proposing City Hall partner with Sacramento Public Schools to create a youth mental health campaign. This solution would require schools to distribute informative handouts three times a year and keep posters with resources up throughout campus all year. Since students often don't feel comfortable going to adults, it would give them the opportunity to anonymously receive the resources they need for support. They would be able to contact someone who would make them feel safe and heard. Youth must know they are not alone, so they feel comfortable receiving the mental health support they need before a crisis. Our solution would allow students to anonymously access the resources they need for support by approaching a poster and taking a photo or receiving a handout at several points throughout the school year. Having mental health resources readily available for youth creates an environment where mental health needs will be supported. Schools are the first line of defense for mental health, so supportive resources must be easily accessible. I would like to introduce our next speaker, Ryan Duratt, who will be explaining how our billboard will not only reach the youth, but the entire community.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and council members. I would like to take a moment to present to all of you our group's billboard. It is imperative that awareness of the youth mental health crisis is spread even beyond students, which is why our message must be displayed around the city. Our billboard slogan, Because You're Not Alone, serves as a reminder to youth that there is no shame in reaching out for help, and the phone numbers on the right will lead them to essential mental health support services. Along the bottom, we've concluded a call to action to the rest of the community, parents, teachers, and neighbors alike, to support the youth around them in every way they can. Furthermore, due to the current global pandemic we find ourselves in, access to mental health resources is more important now than ever. Being relegated to distance learning out of our bedrooms and restricted from the vital peer-to-peer contact we're used to has inevitably put an emotional strain on countless students. Our billboard will confront this issue head-on by pointing Sacramento's youth towards the services they may desperately need and deserve. Thank you for your time. I would now break your attention back to Stephanie Ford for her closing remarks.
Thank you. City council members, we must take action immediately. Students need to have access to these mental health resources. They need to be more aware what is available to them. Our project, including the posters, handouts, and billboard mentioned earlier, will undeniably assist in this task. The two stories that you heard from Tyler Chan and Kalila Osborne reflect what thousands of students in our communities experience on a daily basis. Mental health matters, and access to help could be the difference between life and death. Let's assure the youth in Sacramento that when it comes to mental health, they are not alone. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes. I know I have a couple of questions. Um, again, this is really right on and so timely. Um, just the fact that you are raising awareness because you are so right, you know, COVID is the pandemic, but mental health, especially remaining young people, I think, is becoming the epidemic. I wonder whether or not you have done any research, and if not, whether you would make time, maybe even outside this program, to do some research about where the mental health resources are for youth in the community and where the gaps are. Because one of the frustrations I know that a lot of people express, both adults and young people, is that even with the numbers, um, to be able to call to get help, that sometimes it takes a long time to actually get an appointment because there aren't enough providers, because there aren't enough programs, and that some of the advocacy needs to be looking carefully at where the money is currently being spent. The county, um, who are our partners, they administer, for example, the Mental Health Services Act, Proposition Sixty-three. Twenty percent of that money is spent on prevention and early intervention every year. I know that the county, um, is working, in fact, with the school districts to try to bring more mental health, uh, counselors and therapists into the schools. But I think your voices around where the gaps are and even how some spending priorities might change to make sure that we have more money for youth-related mental health would be a really important, um, uh, follow-up to the really good work that you guys just presented. That's my comment, and I'd be, love to hear your response.
Um, our group is really, really passionate about this project. As you could see from our PSA, a lot of us have personal experience with mental health issues, and so that's definitely something that we would be interested in following through with to find out where the gaps are and continuing to make sure that Sacramento's youth are connected to the mental health resources that they need to be. I don't know if any of the rest of you want to respond as well.
I would offer to help you with this project, by the way. Um, i- if you, if you wanted to, to connect you with some resources to assess the resources, so to speak, to help with the project. If, if the, if the group or anyone is interested in following up on that, please contact my office, all right, and we'll, you can work together on that.
Mr. Mayor, I have a suggestion.
If I could tag on to you for just a second?
Yes.
You know, we have, uh, some, some of you, uh, know this, but, um, we have the Youth Committee out in Natomas and in, in District One. And one of the things that has really worked well around this issue is, you know, obviously, the thing that kids need most is caring adults, whether those are parents or grandparents or mentors or teachers. But that's, that's all the research leads back to a caring adult in a, in a young person's life making all the difference. And so what, what I've tried to do with the Youth Advisory Committee in this regard is have two adults that are full-time responsible for that committee. One of them is Bree Klein, and she does workforce development. So helping the young people that are in the District One Youth Advisory Committee find jobs or volunteering efforts, if that's what they want to do. She also recently went through the Sac County, I think it's Sac County Office of Education Program, where they will train people like her, who, yeah, Sac County Office of Ed has a program for people who work with youth to become basically suicide prevention gatekeepers. So they know all the resources, they know how to talk to youth, and they know how to work with them. This might be a really good tool. Bree went through the program so that all of the youth, we have a thousand youths in our, uh, pro-, in our Yak, in our District One Yak Program Youth Committee, and all of them have access to Bree. And in addition to being a person who can help them with, um, you know, finding a job or finding a volunteer opportunity, she can also help navigate them through this process if they need some mental health help or in particular, suicide prevention. So that training program might help you train the trainers, so to speak, to get you all started with having students in, in each school that are, are prepared and, and able to be like, uh, youth advisors and help each other. A great pro-, great project, really important work. Congratulations, all of you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a suggestion as well.
Yes, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
So it was a great presentation, and as you mentioned, access to resources is the problem. I would suggest that you go to the Sacramento County Office of Education and convince them that your billboard could, uh, be the precursor to a lot of online education. Since so many kids are doing distance learning now, the way you can push out information quickly and easily to them is to convince teachers to maybe start a class with a brief message about youth mental health and perhaps show your billboard, uh, you know, with access to resources. So, um, it's just a suggestion, but it might be worth pursuing because, uh, you know, right now, billboards are really not going to be that effective or handouts since you're not at school. But if you can push the information out to the classroom via the computer, I think you'll reach a tremendous amount of the student population.
Thank you. Art, thank you, Vice Mayor. Are there other comments from members of the city council? Uh, Councilman Chenier? Are you on, uh, the Zoom?
I am here now. Thank you.
Okay. You know, you, you have been working on a number of initiatives, uh, through, with the city team around, uh, the CARES Act funding in mental health. Can you make some connections here?
No, I, I would, I would love to make connections. Um, we work with Cities Rise, we work with Youth Forward, and a number of other organizations, and there are at least five initiatives that are going on. I know, uh, that Superintendent Dave Gordon and Peter Bealenson were both briefed last week on those. So I want to encourage, you can either call the mayor's office or call my office, um, just say, I want to talk about mental health, and we will connect you with the right folks. I think a lot of it is, some of it is about program, but a lot of it is about advocacy. And from what I've heard, uh, over the last couple of hours, you guys are great advocates. Um, and I want to commend you all on the, on the job that you did today. You know, uh, I think it gets better every year, and you face challenges because of the pandemic that no one has faced before, and just the overall uncertainty that we have. The exciting thing for me is I don't think anyone was surprised by the sophistication and quality of your presentations. We've grown to expect that, um, and that's putting you all at the level that, uh, you should be in really helping to bring information and recommendations to the city. So for me, I just want to say thank you. Um, uh, I had you kind of on and off. We were driving through the mountains, so it was a little bit tough. But, um, it's wonderful to see all your faces now and, um, you know, And, you know, one of the highlights of my year always is being able to talk to all of the folks in Summer City Hall. We did that over Zoom. I look forward to being able to do it with some of you as returning youth next year and doing it in person if we can get through all of this. But again, I just want to say thank you. You did a great job. You were sophisticated. And Mayor, I want to note that we'll probably be ending this meeting in a few minutes. This is the first time we've had a two o'clock meeting that's ended on time or early. And I want to thank young people as well for being concise, being data-driven, and being persuasive in your arguments. And anything I can do to be helpful, I'm more than willing to do. So thank you.
What Jay is saying, that we adults sometimes talk too much. And maybe we learned a little something from you today. So thank you. I think you're right. What is next?
That concludes all of our six presentations for the 2020 Summer at Virtual City Hall Limited Edition. And again, we want to thank the council for taking the time to allow our students to provide these presentations. And as you can see, many of them have personal experiences with some of these issues, and there's a passion that they have. And we want to continue to advocate for these issues and make sure that we are having our young people represented out there and be able to promote these topic areas. So we will be working diligently to make sure that we get these billboards out there to the community. On our websites, we will start the posting of them, but we want to make sure that we reach out and hopefully look at the billboards, look at regional transit, see if they'd be willing to partner with us to get them up on a rap on a bus or a train. So we're very hopeful that this year we will really move forward with getting these items out to the public. And thank you, students and teachers and everybody that has been part of this year's program. It definitely could not have been done without this collaborative effort. So thank you all.
So what are the next steps, though? I think that's important for us to leave this part of the meeting today, understanding, okay, what is the follow-up? And how can we be partners to help ensure that these projects get the support and the follow-through that they need?
So for getting the billboards out, we will work with the fifth floor and talk about the Clear Channel and marquee billboards. But if there's an opportunity to lend a partnership and get a connection with regional transit and seeing if they want to do a partnership, we will follow up with the school district liaisons that we have and work on trying to get some of those, one of the council members recommended during the presentation at the district level to get this embraced and get out to their students. We will work on doing that. But really, we want to make sure that these activities and the work that these kids, these young people have done, continues to move forward. And by getting them up out into the public, either by the electric billboards or any means necessary, the support that can be provided by the council will be greatly appreciated. Any connections that you have to any of those entities would be appreciated if you would let us know.
Have we been successful in the past getting billboards up and establishing partnerships? Every year, we see excellent presentations. Many of them are based on billboards. And we leave thinking that that's going to happen. Has it really happened?
So what we have been able to do, we have had Clear Channel has utilized some of the free airtime. But usually that airtime is not at the prime time in which people are up. So they are going up at two, three, four o'clock in the morning potentially. So not sure if we've gotten, been able to really get it up there the way we want to. But something we have done is in the Yipsey Come Out and Play booklet that we do twice a year. We've been able to put those within our Come Out and Play booklet. Last year, we had one about talking about civic engagement, the Yipsey Department, the New Department. So we've tried other ways in which to get it out, and we've been successful in that. Last year was the first year that we were really able to do it because we had some legal things that we needed to make sure that the students weren't utilizing copyrighted photos and materials. We also need to have some release forms on file. So last year was the first year we were able to really get that together. So this year, we want to even do a better job of getting this information out.
Have we been able to utilize the time on the electronic billboards that we're entitled to?
Yes, we were able to last year.
Okay.
Maybe we could think about this as we negotiate billboard contracts going forward to make this part of that negotiation. Larry, I think your comment is right on. So if we can make that happen, I think that's a small price for them to pay. It's a good community benefit.
Okay. Well, that's terrific. Are there any other concluding comments from any of the students? Any of the participants or any of the members? Well, thank you. Inspiring and gives us all hope in some troubled times. I know it gives me as mayor hope. I know it gives all of us hope that there are young people out there that are more than ready to take the mantle and are pushing in the right way to change what you think must be changed. Great work. Thank you, everybody. Members? Okay, members, are there council comments or ideas and questions on this or any other item? All right, Mr. City Manager? Is there any report from you, sir?
No, there's not. We do have a closed session at four o'clock.
You have a closed session at four o'clock. All right. If there's nothing else to come before the city council, what a great way to start our day. Thank you again, everyone. We are adjourned.